Good evening, everyone. It is now six fifty-five and I will call this special work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. And the city clerk will note that Councilmember Schultz is absent. And the first item on the agenda is the water treatment plant condition assessment report. And Public Works Director Mark Ray is going to present and then toss it over to your team.
All right. Thank you very much, excuse me, Mayor members of the council. As you all are aware, the city's been endeavoring on a number of capital improvement plan studies over the last year. The first one before you all is the condition assessment for the water treatment plant. With us tonight, we have Bo Johnston, the consultant with Black and Beach, as well as Utility Superintendent Tony White and Assistant Public Works Director Jeff Raddick in attendance. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Bo to kind of go through the presentation and happy entertain any questions you do have throughout the process. Bo, over to you.
Thanks, Mark. Council and staff members, thanks for having me tonight. I'm Bo Johnston with Black and Beach Engineering Manager, and we've had the pleasure of working with the city for the last several years. And tonight, we're going to talk about the results from the water treatment plant condition assessment. Couple of agenda items that we want to get through, give you guys a background on some previous studies, some previous work that had been done, get into the actual condition assessment process, and spend the majority of our time talking about the results. And then we do have some next steps on what we're going to do to go forward with this study as well. So, background, the last water treatment plant facility plan was completed in 2010. That study specifically focused on the groundwater treatment plant. That's a nineteen seventy-six building. We did not include the surface water plant at that time because it was brand-new in two thousand and nine. The two thousand and ten plan really identified some deficiencies with the groundwater treatment plant. That facility at the time was thirty-five years old, needed some refreshing. The study identified those items, and that really led to a number of projects that I'm sure you guys have noticed, kind of coming through the council chambers for approval. But there was actually a list up there of things that were addressed at that time and or since that time over the last couple of years. A couple of things to point out, there were some pretty significant electrical projects that were put in to address that nineteen seventy-six years. Those projects kind of had to be done in sequential order in order to kind of replace one component in order to replace another. We're still working on that. And then there were some addition of an engine generator for backup, some redundancy, and as well as upgrades to your chemical feed systems. So, all of those intentional investments over the last fifteen years, and also including regular preventive maintenance by the water treatment plant staff, has really resulted in a water treatment plant that's in pretty good condition. You guys should be proud of that. We'll talk a little bit about specifics as we go forward. But this condition assessment is really taking a snapshot of where you're at now and, you know, giving you a plan or, you know, identifying those things that need to be taken care of in the future. We also took a look, a little bit different from a normal condition assessment, we actually assigned criticality to it, and that gives you guys a risk-based plan as well. It allows you to have a little bit more data in there to identify the things that are kind of high priority in terms of redundancy or criticality. So, with those, and then also like the additional, I guess, the additional schedule for when those things need to be replaced, is creating focus areas. Talking a little bit through the process, first thing we did is we had inventory listing. How this differed from the two thousand and ten study is this now includes all of your supply and all of what we call vertical assets. So that's different from pipelines, which we would consider linear assets. So includes your wells, groundwater plant, we added in the surface water plant, your intakes, your powdered activated carbon. City staff already has a program that does condition assessments and rehabs for all your water towers, so those were not included in this study. Test two, really took a look at the installation year or your last rehab year, and what that does, that allows us to figure out what the age of that piece of equipment is. And we're also looking at what we call the effective service life. How long should that piece of equipment last? So we can figure out how much time is left on that piece of equipment by taking your effective service life minus your current age, kind of gives you an estimate of how long that piece of equipment's going to last. Kind of like your truck with a certain amount of miles on your oil, right? We're doing the same thing for pumps or buildings or chemical feed systems, adjusting a different age to that. The next step was really taking a look at criticality. You know, a piece of equipment that is used for regulatory function, like disinfection or maybe they don't have a complete redundancy, those have a higher criticality. We want to make sure we're addressing those things first. And then next things we're doing is looking at the actual condition of the piece of equipment and assigning a cost to that. You kind of put all those together, when they need to be replaced, the current condition, your criticality, it allows you to kind of put in those items into bins by year and gives you a CIP or a cost model for how that needs to be replaced into the future. So, let's talk a little bit about results. This graph, this is the condition assessment breakdown. So all of your facilities were rated basically one to five. One being brand-new, great condition, no problems whatsoever, five being really a poor condition. If you take a look at this graph, red being rated five, four is a concern just below that. Our goal is to really minimize, actually have zero reds or oranges in this graph. Greens and blue, those are expected, kind of wear and tear, we're keeping track of those, but we really want to minimize the fours and the fives, the reds and the oranges. I will say that the city of Burnsville, really with all of the previous projects and the really kind of the foresight of doing those projects, those two together are pretty small compared to other projects that we've been involved with. Typically, we would see the addition of those two somewhere between the twenty to twenty-five percent, in that range. I've seen it all the way up to forty percent. You guys are at twelve percent. So all of that, those projects that you've done in the past have really minimized and kind of brought that overall fraction down. Another way to look at this is by what we call a heat map. So what we're doing on this graph is across the top, we're doing the condition assessment. Again, one being a new condition, five being a poor condition. On the left-hand side, we have the criticality rating. So the criticality rating means it's a low criticality for one, it is a high criticality for five. High being maybe it doesn't have a lot of redundancy to it or it's required for a regulatory function, but what we want to do is create these strategy groups because if you have a strategy group A, for example, those are high criticality pieces of equipment that you need for your operation of your plant, and they're also in poor condition. So it gives you a focus area of where we want to put the money and where we want to put our attention. From there, you kind of go to a strategy group B, maybe a little bit less priority or has a better condition, kind of working our way down to a strategy group D and D and E. So, the breakdown of that, of those facilities that really were in that kind of red and orange zones before, I should have said before this, you have a total number of assets, it's six hundred and eleven assets in your entire system. So we can also look at the count, which is the top heat map. Right now, of those, the strategy group A, the high priority, only five percent of your total assets are in that category, which is really good. And then on the bottom one, we can actually assign cost to it. It's only two percent of the total replacement costs. So that's, again, that's also a very good indicator of the condition of your overall system as it is. A benefit of that is the city staff already knows a lot about those facilities. And the point out, you know, the point need be made in this chart is that those things that are in the strategy group A, those are already in your CIP as they stand today. So, as we're looking over the next five years, we'll already have money or we'll have those projects that will identify and address those strategy group A. Kind of the next several years after that, we start working our way out of strategy group A into strategy group B. Number of facilities that are kind of upcoming as we start talking about budgeting, which I understand this is a budgeting work session, so note that those projects are kind of out there a little ways. Some other relevant information, we also have two additional studies that are kind of informing our overall water system, CIP. One thing to note is that this study, only the costs that are shown for this study and the CIP that's worked for this study addresses the treatment process as it stands today. So any additional processes that need to be added to address other items, not included in the overall cost, it's just keeping status quo moving forward. Two studies that are working on those other items is the water quality study. You may have previously heard it called the Taste and Order Study. We did expand that a little bit, included a regulatory review, basically a treatment evaluation on how we would handle some changing regulations and some additional changes in water quality. And then ultimately, coming out of that is water treatment plant process needs and process needs cost associated with that. Specifically in those two items, Noah the council has been made aware of radium, radionuclides, and then PFAS has been in the news. We're making sure that we're addressing those and that you guys will be taking care of moving forward on those contaminants. The other item is the long-term supply plan. You know, a big unknown is the Kramer Quarry in that conversion to the lake. We understand that's thirty to forty years out there, maybe. And then really what the landfill remediation impacts or that, making sure that we're working through that, we have a safe source water for the city of Burnsville. Some additional considerations that are coming through that are serving some additional neighboring communities and then, you know, seeing how you guys can work together as a regional water system. Next steps, this data, as we're using it today, is informing the CIP funding plan. The high criticality items, kind of the take-home message and reminder, they're already being addressed in the next five years as part of the CIP. Next steps are looking at years six to ten, you know, what is that next period outside from that? What projects do we need to tackle? What investments do we need to make to kind of keep the plant up and running? And then we're also able to use the condition assessment as a data model to look at years ten-plus way out in the future. That will inform some of your rate studies coming up. So with that, Noah kind of went through that in a pretty rapid manner, but I'd be going to take any questions.
Questions for Bo or Mark?
Very thrilled.
Yes.
Budgetary question. We have the CIP over the next five years. I'm curious what the last five years, maybe the average was of what we typically have to invest year over year in the water treatment plant. So I can get an idea, are these numbers higher or lower, you know, par of what the last five years looked like? Anybody have an idea?
Greg?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have to get back to you on that. I don't have that information offhand.
Well, it's a very comprehensive report, Bo.
Thank you. Yeah.
There was a lot of reading this weekend. The energy one was eighty pages. This is eighty-three pages. And then, of course, all the reports, unless I had three reports. So, but thank you. With all of that, so, you know, I don't know, I think as we go through the CIP, Councilmember Keely will get to understand what that is going to be in terms of where we're at now. But it's good to know that, I think when we had the check-in I just asked about, we now understand what we have to plan for in terms of the CIP, five years out and then ten years out. And that's what your plan identifies for us so that we can take a look at that. And so when we get to the CIP, we can, our staff always does a good job of making sure that we're all planned out that way. Any other questions?
I'm just grateful for this plan. This is very impressive.
You know, the only other question I have, because we are before the legislature for bond, and I don't know where that's at, because we asked for a certain number and then it was reduced down to about, what, two-point-eight million?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. We were, both the House and the Senate Capital Investment Committees did ask us to revise our numbers. We did that several weeks ago. That number was revised down to two-point-six-five million. That's reflective, and actually Bo pointed it out in the report, that's really reflective of the critical items that are already planned in our capital improvement plan. It's actually beneficial to us from a state bonding perspective, that the city has already committed planned resources for the projects. Not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but we were informed today that both the House and Senate Capital Investment Chairs did release their first attempt at a bonding bill. Couple of reminders, there's no agreement on the bill at this point.
But are we in it?
It will take a supermajority vote of each of the caucuses, and will need to be signed off on by all four leaders of those caucuses. So there's plenty of process still to come here before the end of the session.
But are we in it?
The revised number of two-point-six-five million is included in the initial, in this initial proposal for our water treatment plant. So, we don't know what the result will be, but it's good news that the first iteration of anything that's been produced publicly does include the project. So we'll keep monitoring. Our lobbyists will continue to work at the Capitol on our behalf, and I'll keep you updated along the way.
So that's good. That allows us with regard to the CIP and how we're going to fund these criticality issues that have been identified.
Yeah. You know, certainly as a regional supplier of water, our partnership with Savage in particular, this will only help to address future cost pressures, particularly on ratepayers for the services provided. And again, it's a good connection back kind of to the criticality assessment that Bo and his team helped our team with in this assessment. It will help us to then continue to prioritize and move projects up to maintain the plant and to ensure a safe and reliable supply of drinking water to our community.
So, my other question has to do, because Savage is a great partner from the very beginning with the surface water treatment plant. And I want to thank Tony and our staff at the water treatment plant because we don't have any PFAS issues. So, thank you for that. But the other issue that has arisen is that we have other communities who are asking to purchase water from us. Will we have the capacity then to help those other communities that have asked us?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there have been preliminary conversations, and I want to stress preliminary conversations with other communities. At this point in time, I'm not really comfortable in sharing what communities have asked us because we're that early in the conversation. The fact of the matter is, there are surrounding communities who are struggling with the current change to PFAS regulation and requirement. It's part of the reason that we feel that that, kind of the next step that we're in, combining not only the Taste and Order Study that the council has asked us, directed us to work on, but also really understanding the regulatory environment in the current, in our current operation to make sure that we're planning to address those needs. So we are having some of those conversations. We do think that there is capacity in really understanding condition, maintenance, and the council's long-term priorities informed by those studies will help you to make those decisions as to whether or not we wish to use that capacity in further partnerships.
The public is also very aware of communities that are really challenged with PFAS issues because it's been in the news, quite a few of them. And so I've talked to some of them that have been in the news. But the thing that I'm really grateful for to our staff, thank you, and also for all of the great work that you do in continuously testing. And I know that when we had some issues, you had an outside independent group that also did testings for us so that it wasn't just internal on our part, but we also had an external group to help us. So, so thank you to all of you because I think that's what continues to put us in this great place that we find ourselves in. So, Bo, to your team at Black and Beach and to our team internally, to Tony and his group, thank you very much. Mark, the group is doing a good job, so keep doing a good job because water is critical for all of us, and it's the only product that we sell. Everything else, we are a service organization, but it's the only product that we sell. Okay. Is there anything else then?
Mayor Council, I appreciate that. I would echo your compliments in celebrating the work that Tony does alongside our consulting partners like Bo and his team. Our drinking water and our community is in very good hands of experts who really know in our public works team how to make sure that we maintain our plant and maintain operations that ensure, again, the safety and the reliability of our water supply. So I'm very grateful for that work. I think it's also important to note that this report that you have in front of you in hard copy is also available to the public, to the community, both in tonight's meeting packet as an electronic link. It will also be on our budget landing page where all of our capital improvement studies that we'll be presenting to you over the course of this year and next are, and those capital improvement studies really are all about making sure that we understand what the community has, what we have to maintain in terms of our infrastructure, what condition it's in, and ultimately, the goal is to then inform how you make budget decisions in terms of our investment in maintaining and expanding and building that infrastructure for years to come. So that will all be available at burnsvillemn.gov/budget.
Yes. And I want to thank you for your leadership on all of this because we have a lot of information before us so that we can make good decisions, but for all of that. And also being very transparent and having all of these reports available to our residents and businesses so that they and anybody else who's interested in the work that we do can access all of that information and to see the kind of work that we do. So, to you for your leadership and Mark and Tony and everybody, thank you. And to Black and Beach for being a great partner. So thank you very much. Okay. And we're going to move on, and this is, it's all about the budget. So, I'm going to go to you, City Manager Lindberg, because our department budget presentations tonight are with Strategic Initiative and Parks and Recreation. So how about if I let you, have you tee it up and then you can introduce Bethany and Garrett?
I will do that. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As we really dive into the budget process for the year, over the course of the coming months, each of our department directors will present to you department budget presentations. We're taking a slightly different approach this year, just respecting the position that we're all in. Our departments are in different places and have different operational needs. So we're going to take the opportunity this year, following last year's presentation of department strategic plans, really to just check in with department leaders, department needs, and how that might impact our budget discussions. Certainly between now and September, where we will present to you your preliminary levy and preliminary budget, what we have referred to over the course of the years is max tax, which is where you set the maximum levy, the maximum budget, a point at which that we can't go up, but we certainly can come down through the rest of the budget process in December. So each department director, over the course of the next several months, as we have these special budget work sessions, will take a slightly different approach based on where their needs are and where they're at with their teams, to really help you better understand where we're at operationally and what our budget needs are, both in the short and the long term. Bethany and her team in Strategic Initiatives are working to make slight modifications and updates to our department strategic plans along the way. Those will also be shared with you and the community in these meetings. So you have hard copies of both the Strategic Initiatives and the Parks Recreation and Facilities strategic plans in front of you tonight. Those are also available for the community in your packet this evening as an electronic link, and they are also available on our budget landing page, burnsvillemn.gov/budget for the community to have access to. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to people who are much smarter and more talented than I am in the room. Bethany is going to kick off with Strategic Initiatives, followed by Garrett with Parks, Recreation and Facilities, and both will be able to answer your questions following a brief presentation.
Okay. Bethany, the floor is yours.
Thank you, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and council. Very excited to be kicking off our department budget presentations this year, and I elected myself to go first. So we're studying the example. So, excited to talk to you a little bit about Strategic Initiatives and how our work has evolved over the last year and what we're doing to help serve our organization and community and share a little bit about where we're looking. So, going to answer a few questions for you this evening about our team and where we're going and how we plan to get there. We did, again, slightly update and modify our strategic plan to help reflect kind of our current process throughout the year. We kind of say Strategic Initiatives, our team exists to help people and teams be their best to the benefit of our community, to help bring our vision and strategic priorities to life. So, when, last year, at my department strategic plan presentation was kind of the introduction of the Department of Strategic Initiatives, and we introduced ourselves with kind of three kind of common buckets or purposes in our team. One is to build culture and through our organizational development team and our work with Burnsville University and engagement and strengths and things like that, to align our strategy, right? So to really help come alongside all of our departments as we're bringing the council's vision and strategic priorities to life through things like our strategic plan and organizational analysis, and then to ensure support. So, to offer support to the city council and the city manager's office and our team to make sure we're communicating well and those types of things. So, those three things maintain, you know, are still kind of our kind of priorities in our work. A little bit about where we are now, so in our organizational development team bucket, Kaylee and Lauren, I'm incredibly proud of the work that they do in helping managers be great coaches and helping champion employee engagement. A lot of those things are really important in helping to create a workplace where our folks can be engaged and involved and enthusiastic about their work and to help ultimately be their best for the good of our community. We lead our development opportunities and our experiences through Burnsville University, provide, again, resources to help people and teams be their best. We welcome, alongside human resources, we welcome new employees. We consult with our leaders about team-building opportunities, manager development, things like that. And so, really proud of that work that we get to do in Burnsville. And, you know, we've said all along the way, one of my favorite things, one of the things I feel the most privileged about in my work in the public sector is to work for an organization that sets aside a to work for an organization that sets aside a specific strategic priority for organizational culture to say that we're going to create great experiences in our organization so we can all do the same in our community. And really thankful for that and grateful for the opportunity to do that work. Another kind of set of, of those functionalities, things that we do, right? We help walk alongside our, our departments as they are doing things like coordinating their department strategic plans. We work with those teams to help lead projects that promote strategic and organizational clarity, things like our organizational analysis and our service inventory, some of those connections that we make to our work serving the community. We help ensure support for the city manager and communication, those types of things, those strategies, and lead important initiatives and priorities. So, that's a little bit about how our team serves our organization and ultimately our So, where are we going as, as part of our strategic plan? We have a few most important things, right? Kind of our, our core functions that we're working to accomplish as a team. So, the first one is building culture through our managers. I'll tell you a little bit more about what each of these means in a moment here, but bringing our vision and strategic priorities to life, helping people and teams use their strengths every day, and then champion leading edge wellbeing initiatives to care for our team. So, a little bit about building culture through our managers. We know through a lot of research that our team uses and, and works with that great managers help us build great teams, help us deliver excellent service to the community by engaging employees, by helping employees kind of be their best and bringing out the best in their teams. An employee's experience at work is 70% a direct result of their relationship with their manager. And so, developing managers are really important to us to help invest in our organization and our, our team as a whole. And we're really working on creating a kind of workplace where folks can be involved in and enthusiastic about their work and workplace. When our teams are engaged, they're going to be more likely to be productive, safe, healthy at work, and, and ultimately, like I've mentioned, then we can deliver the best experience for our community when, when we're investing in our teams. Our, our team helps to work on bringing our strategic vision and strategic priorities to life. So, you know, our strategic priorities of the city council are those commitments to the community, right? Making sure we're delivering the right results at the right time and helping us measure our success. So, a lot of our work in, in thinking about the leadership team's work plan and our strategic plans and how we're reporting on those things and measuring and tracking our success through those activities throughout the year, really do make sure we're aligned and, and going in the direction that the city council sees, right, for us. And so, I'm grateful for the opportunity to do that work and help us be strategic in that way. One of our, the third one is positioning people and teams to use their strengths every day. Again, we're very fortunate to have the opportunity to, to create kind of a strengths-based organization or a, or a place where we align our work with the understanding that we're all uniquely talented, right? We do our best work when we can use our strengths. We understand our own strengths and the strengths of our colleagues and our teams, and it just really helps us deliver a place where we're all, all using our, being our best. And then leading edge wellbeing. So, we want to be a workplace that cares for our employees. That's incredibly important to us and, again, are honored to be able to do this work, right? It means we're intentional about the experiences that we're creating every day in the organization to prioritize wellbeing. And some of this is a little bit new. This is a newer one to, to some of us and our team, and so some of this means we're navigating some of what that means and what that's going to look like as we move forward. So, how will we get there? We have 10 activities that my team is working on this year, throughout the year, kind of in each of those buckets. So, to walk you quickly through some of what those look like, we're working on an enhanced onboarding experience kind of alongside Human Resources, but really focused on that first couple of weeks, right? And, and we have sort of a one-year plan for our employees, but working on what does that, the best experience that we can do kind of starting day one in those first few weeks. Rolling out individual development plans, so opportunities for employees to, to work alongside their manager to talk about where, how they want to grow and develop. Ordinating customized manager development, so I talked a little bit about the importance of developing our managers to be great coaches, so that's something we're working through this year. In bringing our vision and strategic priorities to life, we're enhancing the service inventory this year and excited to start that work with our leadership team. You'll see that from us kind of at the end of the year in December when we do our organizational analysis update to the city council. Implementing enhanced communication from the city manager's office. So, there's, there's exciting ways that we're working on continuing to engage our employees and the community. A city manager is working on that, and I'm excited to support those activities. And then, insisting, improving and managing how we do our work through process improvement. So, looking at, looking at our, our work and making sure that we're addressing, right, any, any issues, any pain points, and that we're being the most effective as we can in what we're doing. Increasing our strengths and values, common language, so just kind of continuing to help people understand their strengths and our values and how our work relates to those things and how we can use more of them in our work. Working on e-learning, so additional opportunities, different ways to experience learning and development in, in Burnsville University, implementing standard operating procedures across our operations. And then, in, in wellbeing, continuing to part with, partner with Human Resources to kind of evaluate our wellbeing needs. We're working on an OD plan that can kind of further understand kind of what employees are looking for in wellbeing and then enhancing those things in the organization. We are, our team is also looking at some enhanced wellbeing spaces across our facilities. So, how is it experienced by employees in the organization? Just some current challenges that we're facing right now, just in that through our support of the city manager's office and responding to city council, research and those types of activities are taking some time, and so just allocating that time appropriately as we're thinking about our structure. Lack of administrative support for the executive team, so currently there's not an executive, for example, or administrative support to support most of our executive team, so that's an area that we're struggling in, as we look through our work. Our capacity to further develop strategic partnerships, so thinking about how we can make sure that our team supports the city manager and some of those external partnerships and, and those types of relationships and how that helps us as an organization and community. And then, like I mentioned, navigating evolving wellbeing needs. So, what are the continued sort of initiatives and things that we're looking to support the organization and the city manager and implementing to help really make sure we're caring well for our employees and what we do? How will we use our resources? So, our team is, is looking at a little bit of a restructure aligned with the organizational analysis. It's part of the organizational analysis to kind of continue to support those, those needs of the organization and our team and council and community. We're looking at the strategic, really aligned with our, the original goal of the team and Strategic Initiatives to become a function of the city manager's office to allow some, into the future, some primary focus on some of those activities that are really with, aligned with making sure that we're working towards our vision and strategic priorities. And then looking for our team to provide some additional support to the executive team to make sure that, that we have, our leaders have the resources they need and the support to make sure that they can, again, lead, lead their teams well. So, we do have already some, some positions programmed into the organizational analysis in the coming years that will help us to make this, just to make this shift, just to make sure we're supporting the organization and our team. And, and it'll look, kind of reflect those three buckets that I initially showed you, right? So, kind of building culture with organizational development, aligning that strategy, kind of having a function that Strategic Initiatives manager could then help really champion all of the, the department strategic plans, strategic priority, monitoring some of those things, and then kind of reimagining some of that support to make sure that there's a prop, like enough support for our executive team as we look to the future. So, just a, a slight adjustment in how we're focusing on those three areas to make sure that we can ultimately deliver the best possible service to our leadership team, our organization, the city council and the community. And with that, I am here, will take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Bethany? I have a question, Bethany. As, as you look at all of the things that, that are part of your action plan?
Yes.
How are you measuring that when you look at your last slide before the questions? In terms, are you restructuring your group in a way that it aligns with all of the others? And then, is that how you're measuring? Because when I'm thinking about wellbeing...
Yep.
How are you going to measure that? Because it's different for everybody and it's really non-tangible.
Great que, Madam Mayor, Council, that's a great question. To answer kind of the first part of your question, so our 10 kind of activities that, that fit into those buckets, we do measure throughout the year. Some as part of the leadership team's work plan, so some of those are specific in the, specifically designated in those 18 action items in the leadership team's work plan that we talk about in the quarterly roundtables and that we kind of report on through our strategic priority monitoring. So, some of, some of those are measured specifically that way. Others of them are measured internally, kind of in our own, when we are using our strategic plan to, internally, when we're making our, marking our progress towards each of those actions in our strategic plan. We have kind of an internal in my team, a work plan that's reflecting the actions that we're taking towards each of those 10. And I would say, just today, I was meeting with my team and they're working on a way to report out to the council and the community kind of that organizational development arm of it and, and what all of those learning and growth and engagement and strengths experiences are actually measuring throughout the year so that we can report that, those to the council and community. And then I would say, yes, they are, the, those actions do reflect kind of the, the, and actually, that was the reason I made the tweak this year in the strategic plan was to actually more accurately reflect kind of that slight evolution of the structure to be more, you know, building culture, aligning strategy, ensuring support kind of reflects the, the, our most important things. And sorry, to your last question, Madam Mayor, absolutely, wellbeing is going to be different for, you know, for each person in measuring an individual's experience at work. I think that's something that between myself, our HR director, our Jenny, Greg Wright, will work on. As we're implementing those and learning a little bit more, you'll see some more conversation from us coming in, into the future about how do we deliver it and then how do we measure to make sure that we're effective there, right?
So, under safety, you, you have, you have your three, three actions. You know, you have build culture and you have bring our vision and strategy priority to life and then position people and teams to be used. So, you, you explained it. Now, you have 70% under safety, our priority of safety, you say, you'll realize a 70% decrease in employee safety incidents. That's easily measured.
Great.
Because Mike will have all that information, right?
Yep.
Correct, Mayor.
Because you'll know how many incidents, how many less incidents that we have. So, that's easily measured.
Yeah, and I, sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, now that you say it, the page that you're referring to kind of talks about how do each of our kind of most important things, our three kind of most important things, how do they help us to realize each strategic priority, right? So, great question. Now that, that you say that, I know exactly what page you're on, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, you know, because it's, I'm always looking at how, how are we continuously moving the needle? And so, when I looked at your three actions and I, and I looked at yours too, Garrett. So, it's just, you know, I can, I can understand when you get to community engagement, it's going to be on how, but you're, you're working with managers to create great experiences for employees. So, you're probably also going to see some movement in how employees are inspired by their managers. So, if you have a baseline...
Yep.
Of where you're at now, and later on, you can see the movement of that needle from that baseline.
Absolutely, yeah. And, and our, thank you, yep, great question, Madam Mayor. Our team does, like I mentioned, is working on a tool. We've, we have some ways we already measure, right? So, for example, managers creating great experiences, we use our employee engagement tool throughout the year to make sure we're, we're, have that baseline and then are measuring how we're doing with those experiences. That's a good, that's an incredibly helpful tool for us to help us understand how employees are experiencing work and, and help coach too and help, right, like develop managers in the, in this case, that's the Gallup Q12, so, right, the 12 kind of elements of great managing in that case. And like I mentioned, we are, are, you'll see soon, a, a tool that's helping us kind of numerically measure the types of learning and development experiences that people are using throughout the organization. So, so definitely looking at ways to help make sure we're making progress in all of those areas. And, you know, we measure our vision and strategic priorities through the strategic priority monitoring report. So, definitely have, have reflected that measurement here and will continue to...
Well, your Monday connect also gives some, some information each time on how, how the departments are doing. I always click on the thing that takes me to the link to see. So, just so you know, but, thank you, I appreciate it because it helps, it helps me to see progress. And you guys are doing a great work, so thank you very much. And this is very helpful and you have a one and, two and three-year plan in here. So, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. Thanks.
And what I will do, because I have this from last year...
Yeah.
I will see...
You can compare.
...the difference between this year, you know, you always say, where's the difference? Because, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Garrett?
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. It's my pleasure on behalf of our Parks, Rec and Facility team to be here tonight to talk about who we are, where we are now and where we're going. So, our Parks and Recreation and Facility Department exists to provide great spaces, places and activities for the community. And that group that helps us do that includes our recreation team here in City Hall and then our folks over at the Burnso Ice Center and at Burnhamwood Golf Course. And then, we have two different groups in our facility management. We have our daytime infrastructure team, and then we have our evening cleaning, evening and weekend cleaning team that helps us to manage our facilities. So, where are we now? We provide fun, enjoyable amenities, events and activities. We champion community engagement. It's something I'm proud of as our team and, and we'll talk about more later on. And then we provide well-maintained, safe, clean spaces that meet the needs of staff and our community. Specifically, when we talk about our programs and whatnot, our recreation team provides a wide variety of youth and family programs, sports activities, camps, special events that are out in the park system. And then, of course, Burnhamwood and the Ice Center provide those facility-specific services at those locations. And then, our recreation team also is about connecting our community to those park amenities. So, if individuals and groups want to do reservations of a field or a picnic shelter or have a community garden, those types of things, our team helps to, to make those a reality for our community. Connecting with the community, I talked about engagement. You know, we have our website, but we also do pop-up parks where our recreation team will go out into neighborhoods and provide a recreation services there for folks who can't travel to specific locations. And then we also periodically throughout the summer will just do sessions where we'll set up a tent out in a park and engage with the users in the park system. Sometimes we want to share specific information, like we did last year, to, to inform about the Parks Plan surveys and things that we had going on and how they could participate. Or it might be that we have an upcoming playground replacement and we want their feedback on what that might look like, or it's just to learn more about how they're using the park or what they'd like to see in the system. And I'm also excited to share that, starting on this Saturday, we have our Trailblaze Kids to Park Day, for example. That'll be one of 10 activities, special events where we're either hosting them through the Recreation Department and actually leading those, or we're partnering with groups like International Festival, Art and All That Jazz, the Burnso Festival and Fire Muster to provide a series of events throughout the summer between now and with, concluding with Festival and, and Fire Muster. That our staff will be out there, we'll be sharing information about what's available and what we want to hear back from the community and and just really talking to people and engaging with them. So that'll be an exciting spring and summer that we have coming up. And then we care for our spaces, our daytime team, like I said, they care for the infrastructure to make sure it's healthy and ready and available to to meet the needs of of staff in the community on a daily basis. They handle the daytime setups. And then our facilities team in the evening takes care of the cleaning and handles evening setups, whether it's this room or if there's something down in the Dakota rooms or whatever that an outside group is renting to make sure that their needs are being met and it's it's set up the way they need it to be. Where are we going? So we are going to continue to offer these events and programs and activities that meet the needs of our community. We're going to continue to offer the high quality public spaces that meet staff and and community space needs. And we're going to continue to keep them clean and safe and healthy and try to minimize the impact to do that work on the environment. Talked about our events and programs. Parks and Recreation activities are essential. We learned that as during the pandemic as as much as anything on how important they are. But they they help unite people and strengthen our community, help people with health and wellness. Lots of studies that that talk about the importance of being out in parks and nature and things like that. As people are coming to our programs and going around the community, it derives economic opportunities. It plays a significant role in child development. And as I mentioned, the pandemic and other things, they're adaptable and and we can assist the community in in with resiliency and in facing whether it's an issue or or just the changing needs. In the fourth quarter of every year, our team does an evaluation of our programs and we make adjustments. It can be as simple as saying, hey, we got some feedback from participants or we saw this trend on this community did something like this or someone heard something about this where we'll tweak it to try to make it even more successful the next year. Or it may be something is as much as I'm sorry, didn't mean to push that. It may be just eliminating a program because it's on the decline and it's no longer meeting the needs. But again, a lot of times it's it's based on feedback. Additionally, we periodically want to bring in a consultant to help us. And so the last time we did that was in twenty seventeen. And our plan is to do a deeper dive into the recreation services in our community with a consultant in twenty twenty five. As we look at our public spaces. It's important to provide a robust ecosystem of our parks and facilities that can elevate the status of our community. People take pride in in their park system and their facilities and we play a role in that. Our green spaces can help raise property values and they also can boost the economy. I talked about that a little bit before. And obviously, they they bring people together as they choose to either gather out in park systems for events or just on their own or coming to a facility to to meet their needs for their own personal choosing, whether it's celebrating weddings or family reunions and things like that. As you know, this year we're doing a lot of work on our park system study. We're doing a facility system study. And then we're also doing a police city hall design to evaluate the needs of our community and of staff and things like that. So over the course of the next several months, we'll be presenting those results and taking feedback from council and and planning to prioritize how we start to implement those things in the future. And from a clean, safe, healthy facilities. You know, that's the cornerstone of of the operations for our facility staff. We preserve the longevity of our building assets. We use best practices in the industry to optimize our cleaning program. Then we have a green clean. We talked with the team that, you know, it's most important to clean for people first. And then we also want to make sure that we're doing that in a way that doesn't harm the environment at the same time. So, you know, our our daytime facilities team has a great proactive system to make sure that we're staying ahead of issues before they develop so that we're keeping the lights on and the heat on and things like that. And as I mentioned, our evening facility team has a great manual that provides best practices to ensure that we're taking care of the spaces and 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 meeting the needs of our community and our staff when we're when we're here in the facilities. Our current challenges. Some of them are a little bit of what Bethany mentioned before. But the ongoing current and future studies, that collecting that data and having those meetings and and doing that work takes time and it takes financial resources to do it. And it kind of combines with the second one of balancing the needs for research and future direction while providing high quality service to existing customers. Our organization does not have a research and development department, right? So the same folks who are the boots on the ground, who are executing the work on a daily basis are the same people that are leading these studies, that are actually collecting the data, that are in the meetings, that are doing the work. So when we're doing that, it does take us away from the delivery of some of the other services. And and we've we're doing a lot of of studies and and research and things like that right now. So and then obviously the resource limitations and in the implement of the results of those studies. So again, you know that I think it's been mentioned a few times, there's six significant infrastructure studies plus we have the police city hall design project that's going on. I know most of these studies have not been presented yet, but it's not going to be a surprise to you that our park system and our facilities are, most of them are thirty five plus years old. And so when you hear those results, there's going to be, there's going to be projects and and needs to that we're going to want to be thinking about, how do we want to address and prioritize those, right? So and again, in order to complete those projects, it's going to take staff time and resources and things like that, which is the same people that are providing the services and executing the day to day stuff. So. How are we going to get there? And we are going to get there and and there's some a lot of exciting things about what we're doing. But we are, as I mentioned, we're going to, our plan is to study our recreation services again. That'll be eight years since we last did that. We're going to continue to engage our participants and our park visitors. It's an extremely important part of what we do and who we are, and we've been doing it for thirty plus years. And we have opportunities to continue to improve how we do it and and get better, but that's what we try to do. And we're going to stay aware of trends and and look for opportunities to implement things. We don't stay stagnant in the programs that we offer and in the things that we do. We try to stay aware of opportunities to get better and do things differently and and we'll continue to do that. Again, upcoming later on this year and early next year, we'll deliver the Parks Plan and the Facilities Inventory Plan. We'll prioritize the findings based on feedback that we get from council to take care of what we have and and if possible, to implement anything new that comes out of that. And then we started from the in the twenty seventeen Parks Plan. We started something called the Frameworks Plan. But the the purpose of that particular plan is when amenities in our system are reaching the end of life. We're not just replacing them just because there was a volleyball court somewhere and we're deciding, okay, we're just going to put it back. If if that volleyball court is not meeting the needs of the community the way it was when it was put in thirty five years ago and and things have changed and if it's not ADA accessible and if it's not in the right place, we're going to look at, you know, maybe that amenity is not put back in or maybe it's relocated to somewhere else. But it's important that with limited resources and with the needs that we have that we're looking strategically at at what we're replacing, when we're replacing it, how we're replacing it. And then how will we get there? We're going to continue to maintain clean, safe, healthy facilities. Again, we have a proactive facility maintenance plan. The facility inventory that we do is going to help us out a lot. And 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 we're going to stay ahead of issues before they become problems so that they don't interfere with day to day work. We're going to clean for human health, which just means choosing good, safe, environmentally clean products that are effective. And then we'll use the right products, processes and equipment, so that'll ensure a good end result. But it also helps with staff efficiencies when they have the right equipment, good programs and plans in place. How will we use our resources? We're going to focus our time offering programs that meet the community needs. So as I mentioned before, if something is just because we did it ten years ago, if it's not accomplishing the same goals, we're not going to keep doing it and we're going to figure out we're going to how we're going to reallocate that staff time and those resources to something that's more effective and maybe even new for the for the community. We'll prioritize the results of the Parks Plan and Facilities Plan based on the feedback that we get. And then we'll use data and best practices to optimize our facility maintenance programs, both from an infrastructure and a and a cleaning perspective. And with that, I will take questions that you may have.
Any questions for Garrett?
Question and observation, Garrett, on page thirty two of the report. About how do future positions allow us to better meet the community needs? And I see a lot of comments about stretched out staff time. More or less words. There's not enough bodies to fill the asks that are placed on you right now. And I don't see any positions in the org analysis to help offset. Are you guys getting what you need to get everything done?
I remember sitting about right here several years ago when we first talked about the organizational analysis. And I, as you know, from what's been delivered, we have needs throughout the organization, right? And so I very comfortably volunteered to stay at the back of the bus for that. And there may come a time, based again on these studies and priorities, that we're going to have to look at that. And Greg has talked about and we know as a team that that's a living document. I I think we needed to right size some other departments to meet needs that were glaring. And, you know, if there is work done where facilities are expanding, our our team is not going to be able to keep up with that. If there's a huge, if we decide that we're going to do something that is going to allow us to start to do more park projects in a in a quicker mode than what we're currently doing, we're not going to have the capacity to do that, right? So those decisions, I don't think we're there yet. And so until we have that direction, until we know more. We're thinking about it, we're listening to feedback and we're we're looking at the results that are we're being provided with. And then together with the leadership team and and your guidance, we'll we'll figure out how to accomplish those things.
Okay, any other questions? So Garrett, did I hear you correctly that the Parks Plan isn't going to be before us until next year?
No, if I said that, Madam Mayor, it it is the Facility Inventory Plan that I think is currently like next February. Yeah. So it's the last of the six plans.
That includes all of the land that we have, is that what you are referring to?
It's all the vertical buildings that we have in the system, whether it's on, that's on city property. So it it's fire stations and maintenance facilities and park buildings and wellhouses and things like that, so.
That kind of inventory is next year.
Yep.
When is the Parks Plan?
June of this year. Yep, so that'd be next month.
So did you have a lot of pop ups to engage the community? Because I'm looking at your, you know, how do we, you know, with your three action areas? And Donna is sitting here, Donna, the whole community that she manages. Uses Kelleher Park. Did we have pop ups in those two communities over there?
Donna has been a great partner with both myself and our team. We actually, for the Parks Plan, she was able and willing to host a session at that facility for us. So the Parks Plan will talk about a very robust engagement process, the locations that we went to, all the different, whether it's pop ups or online or going to facilities specifically, whether it was in the school district or at Gateway STEM Academy. Like, we tried to find as many different things to do that we possibly could to connect with as many different people. And we had a great partner, New Publica is was outstanding in their ability to come up with ideas and connect with groups that maybe we haven't heard from in the past and or just new groups in general, so.
Okay. So we'll see all of that with regard to your community engagement.
Correct, yep, there is a whole section in the Parks Plan.
What we have now.
Correct.
The whole park system, what we have now. Because then when you're looking at programming, you're with all of what we have now, are you going to look at the existing assets and reuse or renovate them for a different use?
The Parks Plan will talk about existing resources, what the community is interested in and what they want to hear as far as amenities in the park system, and that'll come out in June. The recreation programming study will be a completely separate study that'll talk about the types of programs and how we're utilizing the resources.
So are they going to come to us at the same time? So you have a park system and a recreational programming system, study?
The the June eleven, the June study that's coming to you is is purely engagement of the community on our park system and the amenities.
So the seventy nine parks that we have.
Seventy six parks that we have, yes, yep.
Yeah, because the others are just little tucked away little things that nobody uses. Okay. So that's going to inform us about that. Then layered on top of that will be the programming in that system.
Correct.
Okay, and when is that coming?
You would like to, that study is part of the twenty twenty five budget plan.
Okay.
Garrett, that's like the kids' summer programming.
Correct.
T-ball.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all the recreational programming stuff.
It'll look at the, you know, we'll share with the consultant, similar to what we did in twenty seventeen. It'll we'll share all the different programs that we're doing. We'll share what the health is of it as far as the number of participants, whether it's growing, whether it's on the decline. And then we'll also do a a whole new robust engagement process purely on what the community wants to see offered, you know, is it more of X or more of Y or more of Z or whatever it may be? So it but it'll be purely about what you see in the catalog about here's the an upcoming opportunity to make sure that we're meeting existing needs and and staying aware of of opportunities that come ahead.
Futsal and cricket.
Cricket and, yeah, and things, yep.
Yeah, because when I did my, oh, Hugo and I did. Going around to all of our seventy six parks and then we found those little parks that are in the park system, but they're not parks. It's like when we came back and said, we lost a park and Jeff laughed at us.
We we have.
Eight acre, eight acres and we we lost them.
We we have severen, seven parks that are labeled as preservation slash natural areas where they're really, that's there's just trees and grass and things that are there.
I know, we couldn't find it because it all we saw was trees and grass, there's no no park.
They serve a great natural resource.
So we'll see all of that.
You will, we'll see all the assets and the condition of the assets in that study in June.
Because I think we can make some decisions about those natural areas. You know, do we hang on to them or do we sell them? Because there's there's a need, we don't have any more land. Okay. Okay, I'll be looking forward to seeing that report, that Parks Report, and then looking at the recreation report because that layers on top of that. And then next year, the facilities and all of that. That'll help inform us with regard to the Parks Master Plan and what your needs are. That'll also help inform us in terms of decisions with regard to what you report back to us in terms of trends. in terms of trends, and how do we use existing assets or reuse existing assets to meet those trends? Okay, all right, so we'll just wait for it.
Can I ask one question while we're talking about facilities? Are we still doing the carry-in, carry-out program with no trashcans in certain parks?
Yes, when, so, several years ago, there was a, we started doing recycling for the first time, and at that time, based on staff resources and things like that, there were certain parks that, between the trash and the recycling, that it was minimal. So, you had the staff and the truck going to those locations, and they just weren't finding a lot. And so, that feedback guided which parks would, we would pilot the carry-in, carry-out process. So, all the, and that information's online of what that is about and whatnot, but all the other parks will have a trashcan and a recycling can next to it, and they're serviced on a regular basis.
Have we gotten much feedback on that? I mean, I've gotten a few emails over the years about people not super thrilled about it when they see the trash, right? Is that something that we're keeping an eye on as we?
I would say, since we started several years ago, I've been aware of less than 10 inquiries about why we're doing it and the challenges, and they tend to be isolated, and it's not like, if we found like, oh, this park consistently has that, but some of these things are cyclical based on vandalism is cyclical, trash is cyclical, all that kind of stuff, right? So, we try to respond to those things if we notice that there's a need at a specific location. I'm not sure it would, it would be worth the resources to necessarily reverse that with, based on the feedback we've gotten so far, I guess.
Well, and I've even seen people empty out their car in front of a trashcan at Lions Park, so, a trashcan doesn't necessarily mean that people are going to throw their trash away.
Yeah, I've had complaints about people emptying out their cars, and some of the businesses, big trash.
Makes you wonder.
Yeah, that's not a good thing. Garrett, how many pages is your Parks Master, your Parks Plan?
The draft is due to me in the next couple of days to know for sure, but it'll be several hundred.
Okay.
There'll be pictures?
There'll be pictures, absolutely. Lots of pictures.
Illustrations.
Because I like to read them, and if you give it to us on a Thursday, and if it was like, all the reading that was on this, this weekend, there were two reports that were over 80 pages. Okay. Then, the reports from the different departments, listen, hey, listen, you had three, but they were nice. I could get, you know, they were, but there were like, I think, five reports, department reports. So, I just would like to have more than just three days to read all of that stuff?
Madam Mayor, I will work with Greg and we'll see what we can do to, even if it's.
A week would be good, because you're looking, you're, you what? You're going to have two weeks to look at it, and I'm going to have only three or four days before, before I have to do something. I, I need more time than just three or four days to read a 200-page report, and then, on top of that, all the other reading that goes along with it. That's, that's all I'm asking. Okay. Anything else? It's really good, you know? I like the transparency of all of this. And then, when we do our check-ins, will everybody give a little bit about how you're moving along with this stuff? Our quarterly check-in? Well, I know, you like to give us, and you give us a playbook update.
Yes, Mayor Council.
The playbook is going to reflect what you all have?
Yeah, so, yes, Mayor Council, in the quarterly roundtables, we'll continue to give you the strategic priority monitoring, so that's keeping you updated on 18 action items in the leadership team's work plan. So, absolutely, we'll continue to keep you updated on those things.
Okay. Because I think it's fun, but maybe you don't, because, but I look at it and I say, ooh, yeah, look at that! It's moving, the needle is moving.
Absolutely, and those, like, all of our budget documents are also available on the budget page as well. Burnsvilleamen.gov/budget.
Don't give me three days. You have two weeks, and I, and we have three, that's not fair. Three 200 pages. Okay. Well, are there any other questions? Well, for the first two reports, you know, this gives a, well, at least it gives me a context of how we're funding your department, your department, and what the community is getting out of it. That, for me, is important. What is, what is the benefit to the community from the work that we're doing here? And I like where you, you know, you're looking at the community vibrancy and engagement and all of that, that gives context to what the community is benefiting from the tax dollars that they, that we're using to make sure that we provide the services that they need and expect of us. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Good job.
My pleasure, thank you.
Anything else? Any other comments? Great, look forward to the next ones, because I think this is really good. It just at least gives me and us context of what you're doing and how it serves the community. And it gives us context into, you're really understanding, you know, like your actions, Garrett, and the same with, you know, who's the lead there, and you have deadlines. So, that tells me that you're going to measure to make sure they're delivering by that deadline, right?
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, the next, but Department Budget Presentations are in Special Budget Work Session following your June 11 city council meeting, so, your city council work session, so we'll see you back here for that. I think it's IT, City Clerk, and Finance, so.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you so much, everyone. This was really good. It's good to have your reports. And if there is no other comments, no other questions, thank you, staff, everything, Greg? Thank you. We stand adjourned by acclamation. Thank you, everybody.